To be honest with you.
Be overwhelming.
To be honest with you, it's been one apple and a small pe- a small piece of peanut butter for the last five days, so that's it.
Oh, wow.
I'm on a very light diet right now.
We are on air and we will get started with our study session and, um, yeah. I'm not sure who's, well, I know who's presenting.
I'll introduce a little bit if it's over. Yep, so commissioners, you, this has been bicycle sharrows and bike paths have been a conversation in the past. It's something that was part of our comprehensive plan and part of our street planning. I know you have individually raised questions and just occasionally as things come before you, citizens have as well, so I asked staff to prepare an overview of the topic and give you a little bit of history and rationale. So Jim Toich, Public Works Director, and Dan Stack, City Engineer, have prepared today's presentation and I'll turn it over to them.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Toich, Director of Public Works. First, I want to say that I prepared this study session although I know that many of you have been part of this for a while now. I sort of, this is the first time as Director that I've approached this subject and I wanted to do so in a way that let me just look at everything that I had, everything that I knew, what the history was, and all those kinds of things. So if there's things that you want me to move past because you're familiar with them or we don't need to talk about them, I tried to prepare it as though it were a fresh topic to all of us, so I hope that's okay. First slide, please. The first thing I want to share, next slide, please. I'm sorry, I guess on that first slide, what I should have said was, the other thing is, when I first took the Director position, the City Manager specifically discussed approaching this job and every aspect of this job with the eye for master planning, for looking at how do we do this long-term? How do we set financial and other expectations? How do we know what this costs? How do we know how to build this into the system? All of those kinds of things. So a very global and deliberate approach so that we could hopefully achieve, here are all the requirements within the city's public works infrastructure and this is the, you know, all of the aspects of it and this is what it costs and all those kinds of things. So that's what we tried to do here. Next slide, please. There was a number of references that I used, probably first and foremost is the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. They write something called the Bike Way Selection Guide. It is pretty much what planners and public works groups use all over the country. It sort of provides guidance for all things transportation when it comes to cities throughout the United States. Ashtoe is part, so I'll refer to it as Ashtoe going forward. So that is part of the Federal Highway Administration, which is ultimately part of the Department of Transportation. Those three things all working toward providing a network of transportation facilities for Because it was part of the history of Salina, I looked at the League of American Bicycleists. This is a certification organization that's used to designate cities, universities, and businesses as being bicycle-friendly. There are different levels of certification that one of those entities can achieve. It could be, I believe, bronze, silver, or gold. They also do something that we'll talk about, honorable mentions. The manual for uni- the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, it's sort of what we use as our bible. I'm sure you've all heard of it and have seen it before, but it tells you all of the regulatory requirements for signs and markings and just pretty much everything that's needed when it comes to regulating public transportation infrastructure. A little bit, not a lot of research, but the Vitalist Health Foundation and Centers for Disease Control, really, it was only about one particular slide. I wanted to talk about the elements of a healthy community and whether or not bicycling was a part of that. And then probably the single most important document is the Salina Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. So, starting from, the first thing I wanted to do was try to learn as much as I can about what bicycle networks mean to the, to Salina based on what is in the comprehensive plan and what that plan tells us in terms of what the network should look like. And so there's a couple of things I want to point out. I guess the first is, when we refer to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, we are actually referring to a map. We'll show you that map a little bit later and maybe talk a little bit more about the network itself, but the master plan is really the map of all the facilities. And facilities is a term in Ashtoe bicycle language, meaning whatever kinds of signs and markings are used to establish routes or ways for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. So facility doesn't necessarily, it's not referring to like a building or something like that. It simply, it may mean bike lanes or sharrows or hike and bike trails, those kinds of things. One of the things that caught my eye right away, paragraph C3, talking about providing connections to both bicycles and pedestrians, and that seemed to come up pretty frequently in all the documentation I read, and we'll talk a little bit more about this. I do want to point out that the master plan, the map, was last updated in September 16th of 2021. So it was approved in 2016. It has received some updates, so for instance, when engineering designs and then lets a project and we construct a new hike and bike trail somewhere, that is how that plan would be updated, to reflect whatever the latest condition of our hike and bike system within Salina is, to try to hopefully best represent what we actually have on the ground. The other thing, when I was reading this, that I thought about is, every morning I come to work, some, usually between 6:30 and 7 o'clock in the morning, and as I'm driving down Ash Street headed toward my typical parking spot, I always pass two gentlemen, both wearing reflective clothing, I'm not sure where they work, wearing helmets, riding bicycles. And one of the things it talks about in the plan is about that commuter bicyclist, and it's something that I honestly hadn't thought about. I have a bike, I ride my bike, I do so recreationally. I've never thought of it in terms of being a mode of transportation or a way to commute back and forth to work, but these two gentlemen seem to do it every day. Before I became Director, I was the Operations Manager down at General Services, and one of the first things I noticed was that I had a select group of people who worked there, who ride their bikes to work every day regardless of the weather. So I want to, and that sort of reminded me of that, and that whatever it is that you decide today or provide guidance for is, we'll keep those kinds of things in mind as, to try to fulfill whatever it is that you would like us to do. Next slide, please. So, the comprehensive plan then starts talking about multimodal transportation. This isn't any, you know, high science or anything. What it's really saying is, when you provide a network for pedestrians and bicyclists, as you do for those who use automobiles, the vast majority of people, think about it in terms of getting to work, to going to a place of business, going to a city park or recreational venue, and try to think about it in all those terms, and then think about the different riders you have. And this will come up as an important issue on several slides later, but it's pretty Two, two properties of what Ashtoe, how they recommend that these things be designed is based on, one, safety, and two, comfort, meaning rider comfort. And we'll, you'll hear me talk more about that comfort and safety as an important part of the network as going forward. The other thing that I've noticed since I've been with the city in general is, one of the things that I think is important, whatever facilities we have and we decide to have in the future, it is, seems clear to me that when we apply for federal grants, for example, whether or not that's the reason we get a grant, I don't know because I wasn't sitting on that committee, but what I can say is that it's an aspect that, as staff, we have to prepare answers for as part of the grant process. And that seems to be more true now than it was even just several years ago, for what that's worth. But typically, there is always a paragraph, a page, or a section of a grant application that addresses multimodal transportation for a fairly significant number of state and federal-type grants. Next slide, please. So, this is the timeline, and I intentionally started it with the comprehensive plan. It would be, it would be remiss of me to not mention that Salina has a very long history of bicycling that far exceeds whatever the city did in 2010. One of the things that I discovered, that Dan provided me, and I will say that if you have questions, Mr. Stack is here to provide that more institutional knowledge regarding the history of this. He's been involved with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advocacy Group since its founding and, obviously, he builds projects every year, and so he can probably answer those questions that I'm not able to. But one of the things that we were talking about was, is this the first time we've ever tried to map a bicycle network? And that answer came back to me as an absolute no. So in the, from about the early 70s to the early 80s, there was this renaissance, I mean, I remember it growing up, there was this renaissance in bicycling. I think it was probably the advent of the 10-speed that really started to change direction, but from about the early 70s through the 80s, there was a very, a very vibrant activity taking place in the city of Salina. I know that because I found a lot of documents that talked about it, starting in about 71. But as I was looking at this map, which is, this is the first network that I was aware of that Salina provided, what I found interesting is on the back of this map, it has pictures of two brothers, Fred and Frank Eberhart, pardon me if I say it wrong, but the photo of them is from 1893, bicycling in Oakdale Park, and they were preparing for a race. And I didn't know this, but those two brothers had won multiple state and national titles in bicycle racing in the late 1890s and early 1900s. So clearly, we're not doing anything new in Salina. Bicycling seems to be a part of who we are and what we do. And I thought I should mention that. The timeline starts with the comprehensive plan, and this slide kind of indicates a number of highlights that I thought might be worth your attention. The advent, or the start of the Bicycle Advocacy Group in 2013, when the ordinance was actually written for adding the bicycle plan to the comprehensive plan in 2016, and then different information on the placement of sharrows, and I thought all that might be worthwhile. Next slide, please. I thought it would be good to also just show you the ordinance. This is the ordinance that was passed in 2016. Maybe the one line that I thought of interest and something that I learned about from the time back when the City Manager first brought this topic to me, until today, we have had a Bicycle Advocacy Group meeting. And number one, under that ordinance, talks about preferred routes and actual usage by the cycling community. And one of the things that that group pointed out to me that I think is a point of pride is that every single one of these routes, they have driven, that they, when, when, when these routes were made, they helped formulate where they should be and why they should be in those locations. So there may be questions that I don't know. Hopefully Dan, Mr. Stack knows, and if he doesn't, then maybe the Bicycle Advocacy Group could shed some light on what their thinking was. Slide, please. So, also around that time in 2016, we applied to the League, the League of American Bicycleists, we being the city of Salina. I think we were seeking certification, I would assume the first level, bronze. I don't see that in writing, but that's an assumption made, that's generally where you We did end up receiving an honorable mention, and this is a report card that provides fairly detailed information on if you are serious about this and you would like to eventually achieve bronze certification, these are the recommendations that we would make to you to implement as part of your overall planning. And so, so my thought was, okay, is there a way that I can summarize what these recommendations are? And I think there is. One is outreach. So one of the things that they talked about was, any good program, whether it's bronze or higher certification with, with the League, there needs to be a fairly robust amount of outreach, public education that takes place, anywhere from what the various facilities mean, what they serve, how they serve, what the network looks like, where are parking facilities located throughout Salina, questions about if you want to go from here to the downtown or from here to our city parks, that kind, that level of outreach is really what they're seeking. The other, another one that came up throughout the report was the, the need for secured bicycle parking. With the downtown project, we put in quite a few bicycle racks, but this is, when they're looking for certification, they are looking for all of those things, like are there businesses that have bicycle racks? Do the universities in Salina have bicycle racks? A lot of times when we talk about bicycling, we don't think about parking, and over and over again, I read, as I read the various references from Ashtoe and others, that this is a very important part of having a bicycle-friendly community, one that people are less likely to ride their bicycles if they don't have a place to properly secure them. So I think that's, that's the point there. The next one was youth education. So having people as some form of outreach to go to our schools and have kids, or talk to kids about bicycle safety and the bike lanes and all of the different, various things that could be talked about with children and bicycling was the third point. The next one was encouraging youth ridership. So one of the things when this report was submitted, I don't know the exact language that was used by staff when they submitted the, the application, but they said that apparently at least some schools in Salina did, were not allowing children to ride their bikes to and from school. So I'm, I'm not familiar with this, but that was one of the things that they were concerned about and thought that we have to look for ways to partner with schools and others to create partnerships to allow this, and then try to see what we can do to help encourage children and bicycles. The next one was a prioritized grid. So, we'll talk a lot more about this, but it's fairly easy to understand that they say you have to provide whatever facility you build throughout the community. They want a complete grid, much like a city's road network, so that any one citizen can get to any one business or other location with safety and comfort in mind. And then the last one that they mentioned was traffic calming, and simply said that is ways to, engineering ways to cause people to slow down when they're driving. There's far less likely to accidents with bicyclists when you have calm driving occurring on the roads where there are routes. And we'll certainly talk more about safety in coming slides. I can pause here if there are any questions so far, or I'll just keep going if you would like. It's really whatever you want. Keep going. So, I just wanted to include a little bit about present because I told you that Dan is constantly building new projects and we're, I mean, you approve them, so you're aware of them. And when possible, we like to include those facilities with what we're building. Just simple, very simple examples are the work being done on Markley Road and that which will be done on Markley Road. When we began the design for West Magnolia, if, if that portion of road, or when that portion of road, I want to speak with confidence, when that portion of road eventually finds funding, then, you know, we want to include a five-foot bicycle, a five-foot sidewalk and a 10-foot hike and bike trail down that stretch of roadway. One of the things that I've heard several of you mention in the last year or two is the importance of finding a way to connect that university airport district area to the retail and restaurant shopping area of Salina, finding a way to make that connection and getting bicyclists safely down that route. We had met with the dean out there and her, she expressed a serious concern because she said that she has students who do bike down that road now, and you've all driven down it and it's, it's, would not be an ideal place, and it's certainly one, when I think of safety and comfort, that I would, I would, I personally, as a bicyclist, would have concern about wanting to drive down there. So anyway, those, it is part of the planning and engineering projects that we do on an ongoing basis, I think is the, probably the main point of the slide. Next slide, please. So, one of the other terms, and I know you all are familiar with this as well, but complete streets. And it's very simply, it's a philosophy that says, consider all modes of transportation. They use the term equally, but I don't, I don't think it means that you're going to spend an equal amount of funds or something like that. It's really saying, look for ways to include facilities in bicycling on all of the networks to get citizens to all points within the city. It talks about, obviously, automobile lanes, sidewalks, multi-use trails, and then bus stops, transit stops, public transportation. We've mentioned this to you before, and we'll say it here because it's an important part of complete streets. We focused a lot last year on asphalt and getting that into the pavement management system. And for the past several months, I've had Mr. Lamer working on sidewalk gaps. And so, we have now identified, Randy, Mr. Lamer, has identified 608 gaps in Salina, 74 of which are arterial, 42 are collector, and 492 are local. Significant amount of sidewalk gaps to solve, but it goes back to the City Manager's original guidance to me, and that is find ways to program the things that we need. Find out what those needs are, and then find ways to systematically program them to have a complete picture, so that when we bring something to you, you're able to make a well-informed decision about what you would like to do.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Because we're, since we're talking about sidewalks. Last week when we discussed electric scooters, we discussed how if they would have come to Salina, they were not to be ridden on sidewalks. What's the, what's our guidelines as far as bicycle riding on, on, on sidewalks throughout the community?
So the, okay, so the, certainly as I understand it, and I'm sure the City Manager won't correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, the only place that you're not allowed to ride a bicycle in Salina is in the downtown district. Other than that, you are allowed to ride bicycles on sidewalks in Salina. It's part of the reason that I brought up the gaps. The, the other part of that is the, the amount of sidewalks. What we tried to include in this gap analysis that Mr. Lamer did, I told him, don't just look for gaps. Also, if there's an area of sidewalk that is severely broken up, that has, you know, it looks like it's had institutional neglect for, for an extended period of time, please identify those as well, because that is a hindrance to pedestrians for ADA accessibility reasons, for bicycling, for, for a whole host of reasons, and so we wanted to do that.
And I know the new 10-foot sidewalks that we're doing, living out south, are beneficial because you can share those between bikes and walkers fairly, fairly easily, and, and I know, I see a lot of people using those and they head up Magnolia. Of course, it dead ends there at the, you know, when you get to the soccer park and bridge because of, you know, so.
Yeah, I was, I was going to mention it later, but as part of the original comprehensive plan, there was a lot more emphasis on dedicating bike lanes within the road system, and there was a recognition of the, the cost associated with that. So, there's kind of a compromise adopted as part of our comprehensive plan to acknowledge the, the pedestrian trails, the wider ones, as an alternative to the bike lanes that were recommended. We saw that as a cost-saving measure, but there was a lot of conversation about the commuter bicyclist that wants to use the road system and be in with traffic versus more the recreational rider that wants to be outside of the dri- the vehicular traffic.
One of the things as we go forward, whatever we decide to do long-term, is a, an acknowledgement on staff's part, on my part, and I mentioned this to the advocacy group and, and to Mr. Stack as well, but all of my research indicates that there is a specific use for sharrows, and one of the things long-term that I think needs to be done, just like we've done with the pavement, the other part of, other parts of pavement management, is take a, a long and serious look at, to make sure that where we have proposed their use and have implemented them, or where we have proposed them and have not implemented them, that we ensure that it's in keeping with Ashtoe standards. I'm not saying that it is or that it isn't, because that evaluation is something that will take some time to do, like all those other things, but sharrows have a purpose, and they're, they're primarily used for low-use roads and low-speed roads, 35 miles an hour or less. That's generally where you should expect to find them, and if there are those that are on routes that that is not the case, then we would probably want to try to identify an alternative to that particular route.
And if there is a sharro on a particular street, do you think it'd be useful that you, that it be indicated that you don't ride your bicycle on the sidewalk?
I think the biggest thing you're mentioning here to me is going to be outreach, has always been outreach, is safety, comfort. If we're riding our bikes up on the sidewalk, back on the street, back and forth, the 300 or so people that are active bike riders that I know around, and I commute part of the year when the city, when the weather's nice, they all know what the bike map is and they follow those, but we've got an awful lot of people. I saw a guy, I would say a short time ago, it's probably been more than a couple of months ago. probably been more than a couple of months ago, riding with a baby carrier on the back of his bike, which I think is crazy when in the age when you've got car seats for children that expire every year. And he had one of those and he was riding the wrong way on the wrong side of the street. So it's a public education piece to me. I think expanding the plan is great, but I think we need to get off sidewalks with bikes as soon or as efficiently as possible.
I understand. Part of the, one of the recommendations that I would make to you is wherever there are charos, they ought to be supplemented with signs. That's in accordance with ASHTO standards. And the comprehensive plan says, at least for now, by that ordinance, that I, as the Director of Public Works, am to follow those standards when designing transportation networks in Salina. So I hear what you're saying and I agree with you. I think that makes sense. Outreach and public education in almost all of the things that we do are, is probably one of the most important things that is needed, and it's probably lacking to some degree here.
I like the map, but I think it should probably be reviewed and expanded, but I'm not aware of TV ever stopping somebody on a bike suggesting.
You're Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Have anyone ever stopping anybody that was doing an obviously wrong thing on a bike and telling them that's not the right way to operate your mechanical device?
Well, you are actually hitting on what the league told Salina and what ASHTO tells every network designer, bicycle network designer, or transportation network designer. And that is, but when it comes to bicycles in particular, that, what charos, one of the things that charos should do, and if it's not doing, then there's a problem, and that is tell bicyclists which direction they should be traveling. Now, most of us, I think, know that you should be riding with traffic on a bicycle, but there are people we see regularly. I've certainly seen it coming to work on Ash. I see a lot of young kids riding bicycles with no lights at night, you know, when it's still dark outside, and riding in the opposite direction. So there's certainly a lot of public education that needs to take place.
Is putting the charos right in the middle of the roadway part of the standard?
So what the standard is supposed to do, there are very specific guidelines on placement. One of the things that it's supposed to do is help prevent accidents involving parked cars. So its location is relative to whether or not cars are allowed to be parked on a given side of a street. One of the things that I don't think people realize that ASHTO and the Federal Highway Administration, DOT, says about them is that they are supposed to be, and this goes back to proper public education, they are supposed to be the indicator for lateral positioning. So what that means is, that charo means, this is your lane. This is where we prefer you to drive if you're driving on this route. They are not centered on the roadway. I believe, and I would ask Mr. Stack if he knows this, but I believe it has to do, depending on whether or not there's cars parked on the side and those things, that it's a certain distance from the curb that they're located.
Four or 11. Four feet or 11. So if there's no parking, it's four feet. There's parking, it's 11 feet from the curb.
Most of my observer are right in the middle of the roadway, which I think is the dumbest thing.
Yeah, it's 11 foot off the curb. That's the idea, anyway. So that puts it right in the middle of the lane if you don't have any parking there. That's what it looks like, anyway.
Yeah. It depends on whether or not there's parking there. It also depends on how wide that particular lane is, where it's going to, where it's going to come up in. But if part of the guidance is that staff needs to verify that, one, if we do have any of them, if we keep them, that they're in the right location, then obviously we want to do that as well. So it's certainly something that we can look into. Slide, please. So I told you we'd talk more about connectivity. This is just another indicator of that. There's, and it really goes back to what we've been talking about all along. Everything that we do, we are trying to put inside a plan, or that we have a plan already. I certainly don't want to take anything away from Mr. Stack, all of the engineering staff, and the Bicycle Advocacy Committee, because they have done a tremendous amount of work. It was actually, the most difficult part was reading all of the documentation to try to figure out, what do I parse down to put into a presentation? So I don't want to take away from that by any means, but the pavement management plan, the sidewalk gap plan, a capital improvement plan, the landfill master plan, the comprehensive plan, all of these things come down to the fact that we do have charos because they are considered part of a bicycle network, according to ASHTO. How we use them, how much we use them, how well we sign them, whether or not we educate them about them, that's a different matter, but they are a part of the overall network. Again, this just mentions strategic connections. So the point I was wanting, hoping to make with this slide, and I don't know if this is helpful to others or not, but it was when I first started looking into this. And one of the ways that charos are supposed to be used is providing connections between other bicycle facilities. So we're going to talk about the various facilities, and there are certainly ones that are preferred for safety and comfort, primarily. There's other reasons, but safety and comfort, I told you, we would keep talking about. And so, and obviously, if it's a 10-foot hike and bike trail, like Commissioner Hoppe brought up, that is going to make a person feel more safe. He's more likely, he or she is more likely to ride their bicycle on that. What we have to think about and what ASHTO keeps talking about are those strategic connections because I still have to get them from their neighborhood, from their home, to that facility. And I can't build that facility on every single road in Salina. And that's another important purpose for this particular type of facility, is it is used as a way to strategically connect bicyclists to safer and more comfortable routes, whether that's divided bike lanes, or whether it's hike and bike trails, or whether it's getting them to the levee. But if you think about it in those terms, and you think about what we talked about earlier with Magnolia and getting them to the other side, it's about making those connections. And so that's something that we'll have to also look at and say, does this make sense? Is this the right facility for this location? Is there something else that we should do or do differently? Next slide.
Under the aspect of coordination, is there any allowance, or does anybody use signage that says, no bikes, like no parking? Like, don't ride your bike on this street? Go find the next bikes.
Yeah, they're pretty small, and I think this question was actually asked of Ms. Driscoll in her presentation to the commission in a recent study session. But there, for example, in the downtown, there are signs that indicate that you should not bicycle, skateboard, ride scooters, that kind of thing, on the sidewalks downtown. I will say that they're on the decorative poles, and they're not large signs because we've also had instances where staff has had direction that we want to avoid sign pollution, that we want to minimize the amount of signs, that we want to not overwhelm the downtown, and all of those kinds of things. So they're pretty small, so you have to pay attention to see them. But yes, absolutely, there are locations that, and any location really could be marked as, you know, we do not want you to bicycle in this, on this facility or piece of infrastructure. So the bicycle network, I think that one of the things I wanted to learn was a little bit about how the network came to be and just what it, one of, and like, what were some of the things that went into it? And there's obvious some typical things that you would expect us as staff to perform, and that is talking to the public and seeing what the public has to say and surveying them. One thing that I learned in this was about two-thirds of the people surveyed for the comprehensive plan-supported bicycle networks. That is not to say charos, I'm not making that leap. I'm simply saying that the overwhelming majority of people, and this coincides with national data as well, that the majority of Americans are interested in bicycling, bicycle, or at least want to support the idea of having bicycling in their community. We've talked about some of the various facilities, and we'll talk a little bit more about them. One of the things that we already mentioned, that Commissioner Ryan had mentioned, was clearly and consistently marked and signed, and then communicated to the public. And then lastly, designed to ASHTO standards. So that's kind of the things that, that are, it's found in the comprehensive plan, and it's the kind of things that a, someone looking to say whether or not this community is bicycle-friendly or not, that's the, some of the things that they're going to be looking at. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to read any of these to you. I'm trying not to read any of these slides, to be honest. But why create a bicycle master plan? This was actually a question that was in the blue sheet when the master plan in 2016 came to city staff, and then they went on to explain why a bicycle master plan. But from my perspective, it goes back to what we spoke of earlier and the way that I've approached my job since Mike's initial guidance, and maybe that changes my next evaluation, but for now, it's what are the financial and operational needs of this system and how does it fit into overall Public Works budget and direction and guidance to the employees and all of those kinds of things? Do we have an accurate, complete financial model? That's the first question. Is it based on approved design? Are we using the standards set forth in ASHTO and MUTCD and all of those kinds of things? And does it provide safe alternative transportation to our citizens to all parts of the community? Those are really, I think you could summarize this entire presentation up into those three points as probably being the most important to try to find out and try to take advantage of, and hopefully that's what we did. I do know that my guidance, or the overall presentation is to be about charos, and I'm talking about everything. On this particular slide, why a bicycle master plan, I did put a quote in there from the Federal Highway Administration, who sort of provides a reason for why you want to do it. And Commissioner Longbine, this might get to the question you had earlier, but he said that charos increase the distance by which motorists pass bicyclists. So in other words, where that charo is located, assuming that we've now educated the public to know that you're supposed to actually drive where the charo is on the road, motorists nationally tend to move further out when they move out of their lane to go around a bicyclist. They provide, I don't know why, it's a phenomena, but they create greater distance between their automobile and that bicyclist when charos are present. When charos are not present, they're less likely to do that. It reduces wrong-way riding, something that we talked about earlier. The diagram is oriented to the rider, so hopefully they understand that you should, you know, that symbol should make sense to you as you're riding your bicycle. And then it reduces, here's another topic, it reduces the number of bicyclists riding on sidewalks. So if that becomes a goal of the city of Salina, to reduce the amount of bicycling on sidewalks, then we would require charos to accomplish that task. Slide, please. So if we're going to design a system, the League of American Bicyclists has some pretty informative recommendations. They pretty much tell you, if you want us to certify you, these are the things you need to accomplish, which is good. And the first one is equity and accessibility. And it says, a bicycle-friendly America for everyone, but I wanted to know what that meant. So as I started looking at our bicycle routes, I was having a conversation about a completely different topic, but we were talking about LMI districts, census districts, low-to-moderate income neighborhoods within Salina. And I think, to me, at least, this is the way Jim interprets that information, is I wonder, are there gaps where people who are more likely to require their bicycles to get to work, to go buy groceries, to get their kids to school, whatever the case may be, are there people who would rely on alternative transportation to a greater degree in those areas? Are they being accommodated within the bicycle route? And it's a question that I would, based on whatever I, guidance I'm given today, it is a question that I would like to ask the Bicycle Advocacy Group to help me answer, to say, okay, here's the map, and I'm interested in knowing whether or not our low-to-moderate income neighborhoods. And we have four in Salina, one, two, three, and five, and they're primary, primarily central, west, and north Salina. Are those areas properly being provided with the network in the way that they should be following ASHTO guidelines? Engineering, education, encouragement, and evaluation and planning, all of these federal organizations, I spent a lot of time in the military, so all of them do one of two things. They either try to find some easy way, they make everything start with an E so you can remember it, or they create an acronym or something, but it's just an easy way to think of, when you're designing networks, think about these five things.
You mentioned that you're trying to look before thinking about how to budget for these things. I'm still concerned that the regulatory part of it will get overlooked. I think that you're going to have to teach people, I don't know if it takes a click-it or tick-it type moment in the neighborhoods that you describe, but I think you certainly can manage directing people with signage and that, and the encouraging part of it, but, and working on the connectivity aspects, but I still think people don't ride their bikes like they should and need to have the education about it. And you're going to have to get down to that piece where we're going to have people getting run over on their bikes.
For some reason, I decided to explain this slide rather than take what my talking points were, and I had, I actually had three for this one. The first one was the LMI tracks, because that was something that, as I was looking at this, it came up in my thought process, and I want to know the answer for it, and I think it's worthwhile to explore, just to make sure that we're properly dispersing the network throughout the community. The next one is that, and I mentioned it earlier in the presentation, but parking. And the third one is, my exact words were, robust community outreach required. And that's, I think you're exactly right, and that's, I would say that that's, whatever we do, we've, till now, sort of not done as much. Back in 2016, there was more of it because there was a push toward certification, I believe. There's evidence in the 70s and 80s that there was a large push toward it, but it's, we've, we as city staff have sort of been silent on the subject for the most part in terms of public outreach. The other thing on this slide that's important, on the five E slide, if you're interested at all, or the public is, there are only five communities in Kansas that currently are certified as being bicycle-friendly. Lawrence, Manhattan, Shawnee, Topeka, and Wichita. This kind of goes back to my point about the grants, but it also goes to, well, why is this important? And I think there's, this is not my field of expertise, but I would assume, and I think it's reasonable to assume, that there's some economic benefit to thinking about a bicycle network because it attracts a clientele for those businesses and industries that we would like to see come to Salina as part of that larger outreach to grow better jobs and those kinds of things. A lot of communities, a lot of public data is available that talks about when people make decisions about which community they want to live in, a healthy and vibrant community is one of them. And honestly, that's why I started looking into the health aspects of And honestly, that's why I started looking into the health aspects of all this, because that came up in my readings when I was reading the Bike Way Selection Guide. Next slide, please. Which is a good segue. It happens to be the next slide. So it's interesting. The only reason I, I put this up there is because I didn't realize that someone had thought about this, but if you're, if, if the, if you're, the lens that you're looking through on your community is about health, it's focused on, on, on having a healthy community, this certainly gets, there, I, I noticed on that wheel that there are a lot of places that I saw a connection to having a bicycle network, and I'm not going to go through those, but I think there's a number of those elements that speak directly toward having a healthy community, and a healthy community leads to, and this isn't mine, this is the, the research data that they talk about, but the residents themselves report a greater sense of community, they report a better quality of life, they report more happiness, those kinds of things. And, and honestly, I had to go research, because I had questions, why? Like, why lower crime? Why higher property values? I thought that was interesting. But they also say that healthy, vibrant communities have less crime, higher property values, and less incidence of preventable disease. Obvious, I know I've been not riding as much as I need to and have put on extra weight in the last year, so I know that part is true for sure. So I, I, this is all homework for me, this is all, you know, learning for me, and I told you that I wanted to try to take this on as though I knew nothing about it, although I, I have ridden all over Salina on my bicycle. But I think what it led me to, to do was say, I, I think we need to evaluate the system that we have, we need to take accountability of the existing facilities that we provide, and do they match the ASHTO standards? And then find a way to incorporate whatever facilities you would like emphasis on into future design, which is Mr. Stack's role, and then just overall, try to provide what it is that the community wants to represent them. And I think, I think that's probably it for that slide. Next slide, please. So I told you that I'd eventually talk about comfort and, safety and comfort, and there are seven principles in the design. I really focused on the first three that we've already talked about, I won't repeat it, but safety, comfort, and connectivity. Those are the foundational requirements of any bicycle network. You have to do those three to design a successful bicycle network. The last four are best practices. There are things that you could do to improve the system, that is, improve route efficiency, make sure that your routes are effective, that they get you from one point to another quickly, that they're attractive routes. People don't generally want to bicycle where it's nice to bicycle, so they want them to be attractive. And then lastly, that they're consistent and complete. When you have those gaps, you can't really get around the city very well, and then that would lead you to say, I need to find alternative sources, or alternative modes of transportation. Next slide, please. So these are the four types of facilities, we've talked about all of them. Class one are the, the hike and bike trails, for example. Class two are striped lanes, those are just the bicycle lane themselves. Class three are the sharos, and then class four is a, sort of a subset of number two, and that's divided bike lanes. They just provide additional comfort and safety, those divided lanes. What I thought was interesting was that our plan has 72 miles, so if we built everything that's on the, the network, we would have 72 miles of hike and bike trail, bike lane, sharos, everything combined, and of that, we have completed 45. So currently, as we stand, we are 62.5% complete with what has been determined our network to be, according to the master plan that was approved in 2016. I will say that there's a significant amount of progress that can be made and will be made in the very near future. Mr. Stack's working on the Magnolia hike and bike trail from Ohio to Ninth, and that's a, a piece that's long been missing, that I think is good to have. And then we would, we would fulfill seven additional miles when the river renewal project is built, where, when we see that trail built. That's a pretty significant portion of what remains to yet be built. Next slide, please. So these are the ones where you're bicycling, class one facilities are the ones where you're bicycling all to yourself. It is you and pedestrians and no one else, and it is the safest, it is certainly the best facility that you can build, it provides the greatest level of comfort, and obviously that's safer for everyone. It is the most, the most complex to build, and it's the most expensive to build. You're also limited by design restrictions, because you can't put a 10-foot hike and bike trail on certain roads, for obvious reasons. You're just not able to do this one in all areas. But where you typically see them are around perimeters, our levee system is a good example, and then any arterial streets where there's really high-speed traffic or heavy volumes of traffic, this is the ideal location for this facility. Next slide, please. We're all familiar with these, these are bike lanes. There's a lot of detail in here about how wide they need to be and all that kind of stuff. Really, it's to say, they're on the street, they are not separated from the motorist other than a white line on the, painted on the, on the ground, there's no separation or barrier, and they are typically, not always, but typically, in the direction of travel. And I think all of Salinas are. There is something called contraflow, it's used for very, if, if you run across a very certain set of conditions, there may be a time where you want to have them bicycle on the opposite side of traffic, but it's very limited in its use. But these are certainly not as safe as the separated, safer than sharos, so they're a good facility to have, and, and good to use when you can. Class three, next slide, are the sharos themselves. Really, it's, they're the least expensive, they have very limited design criteria, they say, low use, low volume, which lends me, or lends designers to think of local roads whenever possible. But they, their other role, and the time when that might not be the case, is when they serve as connectors, connecting to other facilities that have greater comfort and safety together. That's when, that would be another time that you would use them. We talked about lateral positioning. The, the other thing that came out in this, and I'm, I can't remember which reference it is, I think it's the MUTCD that talks about this, but they warn motorists of planned routes. So they say, when you see this symbol on the ground, that is the city telling bicyclists, we want you here, and it should tell bicyclists, please choose this street over others if you can, and, and use this route to get to your locations, to, and, and that's, goes back to education again, how, how well we communicate this information. The other thing that came out of this is it is best used in conjunction with signs. There are very specific signs with arrows pointing down to where a sharo is, or would be if it wasn't faded away, or whatever the case may be. Maybe there's some kind of design restriction in a particular area, and you can't use a sharo there, so you put up a sign. Best used in conjunction with them. Last one, next slide, is divided lanes. And really, this is just putting a little bit more safety and comfort for the rider, a little bit more visual cue to the motorist, and it generally keeps people a little more safer. It creates, it's almost a false sense of security, but it, it creates an extra sense of security. It makes both motorists and bicyclists feel more comfortable about having bike lanes, because there's at least something that sort of says, hey, I need to pay attention. And in those unfortunate times when someone's on their phone or not doing what they should, you know, they're going to hit that barrier and hopefully snap out of it and pay attention and, and get back in the lane otherwise. But that's sort of the purpose for those. Slightly more costly, because you have to buy the dividers. It also has limits, because it depends on how wide your lanes are, and whether or not you can induce any traffic calming. If you can narrow your lane a little bit and squeeze this extra two feet out to put in a divider, it's certainly worth doing. And it, it is a safer facility than not having them. Next slide. So this is where the Bike Way Selection Guide talks a great deal about what it means to be, that bicyclists translate safety by how comfortable they feel. The more comfortable they are, the more likely you are going to have drivers of all ages and experience types use that facility, because they feel safer about it. What I thought was interesting, if you add up the low end of the percentages and the high end of percentages, it basically says 60 to 72% of Americans are one of those three categories. They ride bikes, they, you know, support riding bikes, or they would like to, you know. A lot of times, people don't, or are limited as to what they ride, based on inadequate facilities, not having the appropriate facilities to ride on. Quantity, quality, and then whether or not they feel that traffic is calm enough for them to ride on this particular route. Next slide, please. So there's 37.5% of our network that has yet to be built, that still needs to be built. And what I was trying to think of about now was sort of the, what are, what are the best management practices? What are the things that we should, that, that I started to take away and what I think might be worth talking about? And that is using the 10-foot hike and bike trails whenever possible. Obviously, it's most expensive, I think Salina has a, a history of, of doing exactly that, though, building 10-foot hike and bike trails whenever we can, and that is very commendable, and it's something that I think if we were ever to go back for certification in the future, that ASHTO would look very favorably on. Providing a complete grid or connections, using all of the various facilities to create a complete network, following ASHTO guidelines. And again, it goes back to those, those things that we've talked about frequently, and that is educating the public, setting community standards, providing good community outreach, increasing the amount of bike parking we have in order to be certified as a bike-friendly, or if we even want to just say, whether we do the certification or not doesn't matter. As much as it matters, are we living up to the, the expectations of the standards? Are we meeting the standards that would be required to be considered bicycle-friendly? And that's just coordinating with the business community, the universities, and, and, and at least having the conversation with them. I immediately thought of OCCK, that we know that they have a portion of their ridership that bicycles, and they use that bicycle. I think Lauren described it in her, Ms. Driscoll described it in her study session as the last mile. It's that connection from your home to that nearest bus stop, that they might use their bike, and then they strap the bike on the, the bus, they get dropped off, and then they bicycle the rest of the way to work. And I would like to have a conversation with OCCK and, and see where they think that is either good or, or lacking in the city's network, and it's something that maybe we could look at in the future. Next slide, please. I just wanted to show some of the signs that are used, there's a number of them, they're used for how to, these are the signs that you use when you're in conjunction with sharos. What isn't shown on here is the downward 45-degree arrow, and should be set so that it's high enough up on the pole to, to hopefully illustrate where that bicycle needs to be. And just me describing it says that there's a lot of public education that would have to take place in implementing those signs, but I wanted to show you what they, they look like. The MUTCD speaks about it somewhat the same, but they say that they reduce the chance of bicyclists impacting a parked car, a parked vehicle. A lot of what the MUTCD focuses on is design, how, how our transportation systems are designed, and that's ranges from ADA parking to how we stripe lanes to everything. And so they're thinking about it maybe slightly different than, than others. They do talk a little bit about lateral positioning, and that's why they set those so many feet from the curb guidelines when you place them. And then encouraging safe passing, and then reducing wrong-way bicycling, which we've mentioned before. Next slide, please. So this is about cost. I know that I've heard members of the public have concerns about this, and if I'm going to follow the city manager's guidance, then I have to pay attention to this as well. How does this impact my budget? So you see, I provided several years of sharo budget here, going back to 2015, and prices range somewhere between $100 and $400, with the average being about $230 for a sharo. So when I'm thinking of building the management network that controls our, how, you know, how we're spending our money to, to fulfill all of the obligations that I have based on your guidance and the guidance from the city manager, is that sharos represent a quarter to three-quarters of 1% of my budget. So it is, and, and, and I'm not saying that that's good or bad, I'm just saying it's a very small portion of my budget in relation to all of the things that I do, all the things that Public Works provides. And so I'll leave that to, to you all to decide whether that's too much or too little. I wanted to put it into some kind of perspective for you. If, if we paint the sharos, they don't last as long, but it costs me about $12,000 to $13,000 a year to, to maintain those sharos if I do it with paint, and that's about one-quarter of 1% to do that. And if I use thermoplastic, which is just an improved way to provide street markings, then it's three-quarters of 1% of the Public Works budget. So it's a, a very small amount of, overall, from that perspective. It does not raise a concern to me that I've, that we're overcommitted if, if you suggest that we continue to provide these.
What, what's been the average life expectancy of the painted sharos?
Three, four years, maybe.
And the thermoplastic would be expected to last?
Seven.
Seven, seven years.
Again, typically. So our road, our road network is maintained every seven, eight, 10 years, so they last the whole time.
Is the thermoplastic, the raised, real thick?
Yep.
With the kind of reflective? The what?
You can feel them, you can actually.
You can feel it when you go over it.
You can feel it when you drive over them, yes.
Is there a difference in reflectivity?
Yes.
Yes.
Bend your rim.
They, they are much easier to see at night.
Does the city apply?
When you have older eyes.
Either one, or one or the other? I mean, are we maintaining both?
Yes.
Substances?
Yes.
So I mean, one, with one, you'll be out there every four years, and the other, you'll be out there every seven, eight years.
Are our crews doing it, or is it subbed out?
Marking is a contract that the, the city does every year. Traffic Control Work Group does do paint, they primarily are responsible for painting all of the white stripes and ADA compliance in our, in our parking lots throughout Salina, I think for the most part. So this is a contract that we let every year. And then the other way that they would be paid for is if, because we've had 因为我们之前在 previous study session 中有过这个问题， 所以如果我们重新铺设道路， 那我们就需要再涂上 sharos， 无论是热塑化还是涂鸦。
另一个问题，
是的， 我认为， 在铺装的底部。我想问一下街道 superintendent， 确认我有这个故事， 但是这是 Ashtoe， 其实 federal highway administration，DOT 是那个， 讲述关于， 所以，我们谈谈我们有， 我们已经谈到， 如 sidewalk gap 问题， 和 master plan map， 对这个特定主题。知道 corridors 或 projects 内容， 当 Mr. Stack 在设计或建造一项新项目， 在 Salina 合同的项目， 另一个我们已经谈到， 我已经提到， 是与 bicycle advisory 组织合作， 然后也是 OCCK， 和这些事情一起讨论， 好吧，让我们评估我们的情况， 然后看看我们做了什么， 是按照 Ashtoe 标准， 第一， 第二， 那些 low 到 moderate income 区域呢？ 不要忘记这一点。然后我们是否提供， 更重要的是， 系统中的缺口在哪里， 我们是否提供， 你知道， 我们最大的利润来源在哪里？ 像， 你知道，我们会得到七英里， 仅在 river project 上。而 completing the Ohio to Ninth piece 是很重要的， 如果你是骑自行车的， 我们可以做的另一个事情是， 如果你感兴趣， 它可能被推荐， 是调查公众， 说， 你看到缺口了吗？ 你知道， 他们问同样的问题。然后通过 normal assessment evaluation 过程， 问这种问题， 然后根据 Ashtoe 的建议做出选择。这是 comprehensive plan 的一部分， 所以除了 ongoing additions， 除非经过不同的指导， 那我们就会继续建设， 第三个， 或者第三个， 我们在接近。现在的自行车道路地图， 我把它放在那里， 有一个链接。我这么做只是想说， 如果我们需要暂停， Mr. Stack 可以帮助解释你有什么问题， 我可能不知道。我们不需要进入那个地图，
我想看到骑自行车 advocacy 组织的人。所以我们可以做一些倾听， 然后我们可以把我们的问题留着， 甚至在另一个日子里。
好的。下一页，谢谢。因为那个报告卡上提到了， 但我想展示， 加多了骑自行车的停车点， 每天都骑到学校， 作为照片的证据。底角有些骑自行车的伙伴， 在 bicycle advocacy 组织中参与， 他们经常一起骑， 还没有解决的问题。
我曾经尝试， Dyke 道的终点在西山路， 怎么连接到西部？ 看着它在网上。
我同意， 所以， 我用的方式是， 有人可能会打电话问一个特定的区域， 如果我接电话， 那我就需要打开地图， 让我可以看到你在说什么。我在一张屏幕上看到， 然后在另一张屏幕上， 我在说话， 我在努力搜索这个地点， 让我可以至少在 Google Maps 上开车， 让我可以 hopefully 回答问题， 或说，是的，这有道理， 我觉得你说得对， 我觉得首先， 它正在重置， 会有很多改进。是了解的东西， 但是大多数人不想阅读它。在城市的网站上是 mapping。找到一种方法， 因为它不容易使用， 它有点困难， 我同意。
有没有， 我们要把它放在比较短的顺序， 从 bicycle advocacy 组织， 论论， 有些遗漏， 我们需要考虑， 一些趋势， 也许可能。
Phil Black， 在2011 年， Sean Jones， 骑车店， Bike Tech， 骑车店， 向我提出了， 所以他要求我们组建一个组织， 它是一个 umbrella 组织， 包括公路赛车， 我认为你也是其中的一部分， 和 mountain bike 的爱好者， 我对不起， 我错过了什么？ 积电， 我是一个， 遗憾骑者， cruiser cult， 有一个整个组。所以我们被要求举行会议， 我做到了， 我应该说它 imperfect。认为它是圆周率。所以在那个时间， 你有工程监管， 教育， 鼓励和评估， 你回去看看， 你做了什么， 重新评估， 重新设计， 以此类推。我们没能做到这一切。现在我最近才发现， 政府部不是其中一部分。所以， 那是其中一部分。对于 sidewalk 与 sharos 的对抗， 记得我们也会包括孩子。所以， 就像 sharos 一样， 我不知道我想要六岁小孩在那里， 而 sidewalk 会更好。另一方面， 如果你像我这样的 commuter， 你指出的 sidewalk 有些不太好， 确实， 我正在搬进的房子， 我们正在把 sidewalk 替换， 因为如果碰到那种东西， 你会撞到轮胎。所以， 记住， 我们也包含孩子。会有例外， 人们在， 没有我更疯狂的事， 看到谁走错路， 没有路灯， 夜里穿着黑色衣服， 我说， 我看不到你。我同意你。烟烟， 人们仍然做。我们还在监狱里看到。所以， 我们的目标是， 如何从一个城市到另一个地方 safely， 有舒适感， 但我们不想被堵。第五街是个好例子， 在那里， 你不想在早上八点骑自行车， 因为人们开着门。所以我不得不在那个时刻骑路边自行车。你今天没有骑路边自行车， 是吗？ 在这里， 我没看见你从建筑里面走进来的。
是的。
你确定？ 好的， 我想确保。无论如何。所以连接性也是一个很重要的部分。在伦斯伯格和曼哈顿等地， 这似乎比我只说自行车在街上， 这个意思要更有意义。它是一个 proactive 的事情， 是积极的， 我想强调， 我觉得 sharos 是一个很便宜的方式。也有， 有一些研究说， 当有自行车的时候， 你会节省更多的钱， 在定期改善街道， 因为你有更少的车辆， 少的交通。但是， 对 sharos 进行连接性的问题， 我们遇到了一个问题， 我们谈判， 再次， 它是 imperfect， 但是 Mr. Stack 和我讨论， 例如， 定义说当你走到标记线， 你想右转， 在其他城市， 我们参观过的， 定义说， 联系， 赢取自行车。我拍视频， 我拍视频， 看到交通， 他们不知道要连接。所以这是一个教育问题， 绝对同意， 它只是整个过程的一部分。现在在 St., 什么， St. John's military， 现在是 St. Francis， 到 Wesleyan， 显示我们有一个真正的完整的道路。这就是我们想要达到的。问题是， 它很 expensive， 或更多， 如果我们等街道微 surfed， 当我们做这个时， 然后他们看计划， 然后他们涂上漆。它是经济上更好， 但是它不是显示我们有完整的道路。你注意到我们从 St. Francis 到 Elm， 我觉得， 然后我们往右， 或往左， 到下一个小区， 然后去 State， 或者 South， 然后回来。嗯， 没有真的告诉你怎么做。我同意， 这是最好的事情。所以， 它不是完美的。
一会儿。我们必须。
我在那边。我觉得最重要的事情是， 很多研究关于骑自行车的好， 我像我一样， 我避免了需要膝盖替换， 过了 10 年， 它终于会发生。我找到了一个研究， 显示超过 50 个支持骑自行车的组织， 在挑战的道路上， 如果我们可以帮助一些年轻人， 防止他们需要膝盖替换， 如果我们可以帮助一些 veterans， 找到更好的道路， 这似乎是我价值。谢谢。
三十秒。好的， 好的， 快点。
开始计时。
好的。
我叫 Jerry Heinrichus， Salina， Kansas。我不反对自行车道路， 以及 paths， 我觉得这是好事。我们需要它们。我对 sharos 毁灭性， 视觉是现实。$230 一箱？ 对 sharos？ 我的天呐。我今天在 Faith Drive， Oxmo Park， 1.5 英里， 24 标志。1.5 英里，在一个低使用道路， 一个低使用量的道路， 和24 sharos。230， 230， 230， 230。视觉是现实。他们看到我们花这笔钱， 我妻子和我去了 Minneapolis， Minnesota， Navy。我们绕过 Minneapolis， St. Paul， 我们实际上看了地图， 我们明白了如何绕过城市。我在 Charlie Pride 在 Beaumont， Port Arthur， Orange， 和 Houston。我妻子和我骑自行车在 Houston。你花费金钱非常慷慨。但是 视觉是现实， 他们看到 sharos， 每次他们看到它， 150， 150， 230。
我想得到一个评论。
是的， 我抱歉， 谢谢。
我很感激你的评论。
别人的钱， 它叫做 opium。
Dave Miller， Salina， Kansas。我骑自行车绕过这座城市， 很多。所以， 我想继续骑自行车。我不会不同意骑自行车 advocacy 组织， 和道路， 还有其他东西， 但是 sharos， 对我来说， 我同意 Jerry Heinrichus， 它们没有什么意义。我经常骑 Faith Drive， 它并不影响那些 sharos 在不在。charos are there or not. They don't serve the purpose that they think that you guys think they serve, and they're expensive. Now I find out the snowplows are going to take them out. So I am, you're going to save money and put it at a much better place if you quit spending money on the charos and put more money in the whatever we need for bicyclists. Thank you.
We will continue this at a to-be-continued date and time. I'll leave to you two to decide.
Correct. We can bring this back to you. I guess one quick item, if we have time, is, is there consensus on the value of surveying and trying to get some additional feedback? I think, you know, as you've had conversations previously, there is a lot of planning and policy that's already in place. If you want us to facilitate revisiting that, then we can get started on that.
Just my own opinion, we did survey years ago. It might be worthwhile to see how public opinion and attitudes have changed over the years, if we've made progress.
Yeah, I think it would be worthwhile to survey the people. And, you know, as a bicyclist, I see little or no value in the charos. Outside of this whole session, the one thing I see is it makes motorists aware that there could be bicycles.
Which is probably the main reason for having, but...
But I would much rather see the money put into trails and off-street facilities.
We will give a opinion on survey.
I think sometimes the charos around some schools isn't a bad idea. It's more of an educational, you know, to look for others. It does seem like they are closer than 500 foot together in a lot of places, and I'd have to do mathematics to see what 24 and a mile and a half comes up to, but it does seem like, at one point, we had, I know on the commission, we had said, okay, if we're going to do this, let's take it out to 500 feet instead of 250. You know, I think, like on my block where we have actually the bike lanes where I work, if you had one where you start and one towards the end or something. But anyway, we'll discuss that at a later date, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be back here in two minutes. All righty, it is Monday, November 28th, 2022. This is the Salina City Commission's regular weekly meeting. Ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. Asked for roll call and announced that Commissioner Lenkowitz is joining us remotely by Zoom. Thank you.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz. Commissioner Longby.
Here.
And Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, took the hand signal from Commissioner Lenkowitz. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We don't have any proclamations, but I've asked the city manager to take this time just to update us on upcoming events, since this is probably the largest our attendance is going to be for the meeting, as it tends to go down with time.
Sure. The item of interest, I think, is the homelessness forum, and you should have received some notice to block out your calendars, but we've identified December 14th from six, starting at 6:00 PM in the Salina Grace location on Seventh Street. The intended format is a panel discussion. It'll include discussion of ordinances and enforcement, which is one of the topics that's certainly come before you. Then also, Salina Grace and other local charities have been asked to be panelists and speak a little bit about what they do, what they're seeing, the problems they're identifying, and solutions that they either offer or they might have identified. So kind of a broader panel discussion. We'll get more information out to the community and to not-for-profits and the downtown in particular here shortly, but kind of getting everything to fall together for December 14th at 6:00 PM.
And the location again was?
The Salina Grace building that they have on Seventh Street.
On Seventh Street.
Yep.
And there will be opportunity for the public to speak, and I would hope that if anyone knows that they want to present a comment or advertise, you know, what they're doing, novel ideas, that it's okay to read prepared messages at meetings just to keep the time moving. But we do want to leave there smarter than we went in. We're not necessarily going to sit there and decide the next year's policy at that meeting, but it's so that we can hear what the city feels and so we can find out what we're doing already to come up with a good policy. So that location would be what I remember as the VFW hall there.
American Legion.
The American Legion. American Legion, thank you. Yeah, and it will be Zoomed?
Yes, we'll be making the arrangements for audio, visual, and sound, so, correct. And then another item that I was going to report in other business, but I might as well share here. Don't have any action item on your agenda today or even next week, but as you as the commissioners, though, we've been putting a lot of time and effort into the housing project and funding from the state. Department of Commerce has indicated to us a desire for us to conduct a request for proposal process, so we're working with them. We're also working with our financial advisor to prepare a request for proposal document. So coming to you, most likely in the 12th of December, will be essentially an application in response to the Department of Commerce's communication to us, providing preliminary information about confirming the intended use of the funds and some of the formatting issues. We'll be making quarterly reports on a regular basis throughout the life of the project. That'll kind of be the kickoff of that with the Department of Commerce. And then also, we'll be proceeding with finalizing requests for proposals and running that process to make a selection on one or multiple housing developers eligible to use the funds from the state, as well as funds pledged by the city and possibly funds from the county, depending on the requirements that go with that, and whether we get any responses that are responsive to the specific requirements of those different funding sources. So a lot of work to be done by staff and our consultants in the meantime. Don't have an action item for you, but we are proceeding with finalizing the application to the Department of Commerce. And I say "application," they've already made the designation. They, in the last couple of weeks, have finalized what they're calling an application process to submit to them for confirmation, and then also finalizing the RFPs.
So we're getting closer.
Yeah, it is progress, a lot of coordination with the Department of Commerce. With all the conversation we had with Driever and with Presidio, we proceeded down the path of possibly a sole-source selection. We're in close contact with the Department of Commerce about that, but ultimately, they indicated a preference for an RFP format. We've let Mark Conroe with Presidio Development know that. He's aware of it and is working, just kind of biding his time as we work on the RFP.
All right, thank you. Move to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of November 21st, 2022.
Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of November 21st, 2022.
Sorry, I got...
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 21st, 2022. Any discussion, corrections? Commissioner Lenkowitz, any? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. None opposed, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We'll move on to 6.1.
Item 6.1, authorize the purchase and installation of replacement carpet within the shared office space of engineering, community, and development services and utilities within the city-county building.
Mr. Eskel, how you doing?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as you can see from the blue sheet, we have a shared office space that is shared by community and development services, a small portion by utilities, and then by the engineering division of Public Works here in the city-county building. That space was last carpeted in 2000, which is 22 years ago. It has surpassed its useful life, and it is time to move forward with new carpet and get that space undertaken. It's a fairly large space. It's almost 6,000 square feet in size. There are currently two spaces that are untiled. The white tile you typically see in the hallway here in the city-county building is really what that whole floor area used to be like due to, it's just very unacoustic. It gets pretty echoey. It's also kind of difficult to clean. Most of that floor was turned into carpet, but there are two spaces, one small conference room and a set of offices, that it looks like probably over the building's life and different renovations became office and conference space, which was probably once hallway, and are uncarpeted. We'd like to get those carpeted as well at this time, so that would add an additional 6,495 square feet to, for a total of that space. I'm sorry, 672 square feet are untiled, plus the 5,823 square feet that are carpeted. We have chosen a carpet that meets the specs that are required by the building authority. So there is a set of bylaws. We are essentially a tenant under that, and there are rules to follow. So we have picked a grade of carpet that meets those specs. It has to have a 20- or 25-year life. It has to be a commercial grade. We've also chosen our carpet tile, and our bid includes a few extra boxes. So as somebody drops a crock pot, as it has happened, or a cup of coffee, or ink cartridges from copiers fall, those tiles can be taken up rather than replacing whole new rooms and things like that for longer-term wear of that carpet, so that is part of the bid, are those extra carpet tiles. It also makes installation a little bit easier with those carpet tiles versus the giant rollout method, which is good in an office space like ours with cubicles and things. Our bid also includes moving costs, so moving cubicle spaces, desks, and things like that throughout insulation, which will be helpful for such a large space. Per the city's purchasing policy, we are acting under Section 8.0 Cooperative Purchasing under state and federal bid awards. So the city-county building authority recently got a quote to do the carpet actually for this room here, along with 107B, and we used that quote and looked at the bids that they had received for the project in order to make our selection of Carpet Central to quote for this project. One of the reasons that that was selected over the others for the city-county building authority was the quality of work. They were able to install that and guarantee that work, and the bid did come in under the other alternates at the time when the building authority bid the project. The total cost for the project is $44,622.68. The carpet itself runs $2.99 a square foot, and with install, which includes materials, glue, labor, moving, and all of that, it's $6.87 a square foot. Funding for this project comes from the building maintenance capital outlay budget, the community and development services budget, and engineering's budget. Purchase of the building or these materials would happen before year-end, and installation will happen before the end of January 2023, possibly sooner. So because this is over 30,000, this is coming to you. Our request is for recommendation number one, and that's to approve the purchase and installation of carpet within the shared office space of engineering, community and development services, and utilities within the city-county building from Carpet Central Flooring in the amount of $44,622.68.
All right, any questions? Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Yeah, well...
Okay.
It's a big space, but yes, I think we were all like, oh, man, that's...
What's the life expectancy? I was looking on here, lifetime wear warranty?
Yeah, it's 25 years. There's a 10-year limited warranty for spillage and stuff like that, but the overall warranty on the carpet is 25 years, and that met the specs from the building authority.
Any questions, comments from the public?
Is laminate easier to...
Give the clerk your name.
Dalton, City of Salina. Is laminate easier to deal with than carpet to begin with? It's easier to maintain and it's cheaper than carpet, and it has a better life expectancy most of the time.
So we did talk about that, but one of the reasons, as I mentioned, that the tile is not the ideal working surface is actually things were dirtier when we had the tile. With the cubicles, desks, chairs, and everything, it's just, it's a lot to clean, where the carpet seems to have less of a dust issue. Some of our employees who had been around longer talked about dust bunnies that were, you know, the size of a shoe. And so the carpet just kind of keeps the whole office clear, plus the acoustics of open and then unopened spaces between the offices, and then you have cubicles and things like that. The carpet really helps with the acoustics.
The entryway where your contractors and everyone come in with muddy boots, is that going to remain tile?
Yes, as per city, or as per the city-county building authority bylaws, those entryway areas have to stay uncarpeted. So essentially, what people think of as our lobby, right by those front desks, will remain uncarpeted, and then there's a small kind of landing pad entryway area on our second door that used to be a public door. It's staff-only now, but that will also remain uncarpeted. It also provides the visual image of kind of a cohesive material underneath those doorways, which is desirable by building authority.
All right, thank you. Bring it back for action.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the purchase and installation of carpet within the shared office space of engineering, community, and development services and utilities within the city-county building from Carpet Central Flooring Center in the amount of
Second. Been moved and seconded to purchase, install the carpet in engineering, community, and develop services and utilities in the amount of $44,622.68. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. We'll move on to 6.2.
Item 6.2, set date for public hearing for the 2022 amended budget.
Ms. Pack, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. State statute requires that the municipalities adopt a balanced budget each year. The city of Salina adopted their 2022 budget on August 23rd, 2021. Statute also authorizes that municipalities may amend their budgets if they find the spending of the original budget is not sufficient for that particular year. Statute does require that we hold a public hearing on the proposed amended budget, and we must publish a public notice 10 days prior to that hearing date. The reason I'm bringing this forward to you today is because the public hearing, their last meeting of the year is December 19th, at which that's the date we're going to set the publication, but we also need to get that into the Salina Journal in time to have a 10-day window of notice, so we wanted to make sure we had a left leeway to get that in. That notice of public budget hearing will include the date, time, and location for the amended budget. Basically, what happens from our perspective is that toward the end of the year, we look at every fund that was, had a budget in that particular year to make sure that their authorized spending is not going over budget for that particular year. It's difficult because it's only November and there's still spending to be had, so we try, we have to speculate on what's going to be happening in the next six weeks as well. There's some good news to the amended budget. There's two funds, there are two funds that we actually are pass-through funds, that as you know, we collect revenue in those funds, and that revenue goes straight out to another, other entities. And in this case, the Special Alcohol Fund and the Tourism and Convention Fund both collected more revenue than we anticipated in the 2022 budget. collected more revenue than we anticipated in the 2022 budget, so we're recommending that both of those budgets be amended to allow us to pay out that additional revenue that we've, we've collected. In the Special Alcohol Fund, that means that we would be amending the budget from $174,000 to $259,000 for 2022. And in the Tourism and Convention Fund, that means that we would be changing the budget from $1,754,000 to $2,333,000, just for, for those pass-through funds. The other funds that are, that are this moment requiring budget amendments are the Neighborhood Park Development Fund. This is a fund that is funded from fees from new development in specific neighborhood parks. Historically, the city's just budgeted $10,000 every year, but we didn't have specific projects that we knew of ahead of time. During 2022, the park staff did recognize that there was some projects in the Jerry Ivy Park for some splash pad improvements, and those, that cost came in at $12,280, which was over our $10,000 budget. This fund is kind of unique because as those fees are collected, that, those fees are set aside for a specific park area. That particular park area had about $16,400 set aside, so the $12,000 was available to them, but we just needed to change the budget for the expenditure. So, staff is recommending that we change that budget from 10,000 to 15,000. The Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund is, has kind of a couple of things going on in that. As you recall, back in 2021 or 2022, we signed an agreement with Global Spectra that they would provide capital improvements of $500,000 to the event center, and staff budgeted $175,000 in 2022. We also budgeted some funding in 2021 that did not get spent, but when we budgeted back in August of 2021, we only budgeted $175,000 for those capital improvements in 2022, and the cost that they've been able to get those projects done is coming in about $347,000 for 2022. So, that's one of the reasons that we're, we're needing to do an amendment for this particular fund. The other side of that fund is the cost of operations. In 2022, we've had some, a large settlement from Symmetry. As you recall, we had a February 2020 cold snap where gas prices went through the roof, and there was a lot of negotiation on those bills. That agreement with settlement was done in 2022. Also, we've had a lot of HVAC repairs that weren't expected in the budget. So, in that particular budget, where staff is recommending an increase of $425,000 for a total of $1,350,000 for that particular fund. The Solid Waste Fund, there's a couple of items here. In December of 2021, which was after the budget was already established for 2022, the city commission approved the waste reduction strategic planning cost, engineering costs of $100,000. And also, in 2022, you may or may not recall, there was a dozer that had a lot of, needed a lot of pairs, I think that came before you here just a few weeks ago for those repairs, or maybe it didn't, but about $240,000. So, staff has recommended an increase in the solid waste fund of $350,000 for a total of 3,000, 3,375,409 for the solid waste fund. The Central Garage Fund is the main fund for the city for purchasing fuel for all of the other entities that the city, the Central Garage supports, but the difference is that they have to buy the fuel upfront, so we've budgeted the purchase of the fuel in their particular fund, and the cost of gasoline just in itself is, what's causing about $385,000 of excess, excessive expenses in this fund. So, staff is recommending a total budget of increase to $1,888,550, which is approximately a $385,000 increase. The Golf Course Fund is another one of those funds that have been hit pretty hard with fuel prices and chemical prices. You'll only see these particular funds because funds like the utility fund and the general fund, and some of those other funds that are also getting hit with these high costs of chemicals and fuel and things like that, have the capacity to absorb some of those costs in some of their other funding. Some of these smaller funds that have very tight, small budgets, those, a small increase can make a huge difference. Utility bills have increased about 23% in the Golf Course Fund. The cost of chemicals has gone up about $25,000 over budget, and the cost of repairs, of repairs to vehicles and an unexpected irrigation pumping repair, this cost a total of about $20,000. Overall, the staff expects the Golf Course Fund to be about $121,000 over budget. So, we're recommending that the total budget be increased in this particular fund to $971,110, or $110. In the fiscal note, I provided you a summary of that because there was a lot of information there, but basically the original budget, the proposed budget, and the difference. I will note that I feel like it's important that before we file this publication, we do, we look at this again, because we're so close to the end of the year, and there's so much going on, that staff will be reviewing these funds and all other funds to make sure that we get these numbers right. And if, if these numbers change for any reason, I'll bring that forward to you at, at that point, but once I publish the number that we're requesting and the date of the hearing, we cannot change those. So, we want to make sure that we have enough budgeted to make sure we get it through the end of the year. The recommended action is to authorize publication of the notice of hearing for the 2022 amended budget, which sets December 19th as the date of the publication and establishes the maximum limits of the 2022 budget. I can stand for any questions. I also have most of the departments represented from these funds, if you have any specific questions on any particular expense items or anything like that at this time.
I was wondering what else was so exciting on the rest of the agenda that all these folks over here were still here for.
Just me, just me.
Yeah.
They're my backup.
Okay. The amended budget itself is not an unusual occurrence, but is it, do you have any feelings if it's the same budgets each year that require the amendments to where, you know, we might want to just budget more for them the next year?
Since I've been here, we do see that a lot in the pass-through. A couple of reasons for that is, some of them, the budgets originally set by estimates by the state or by the county, and then some of them we set ourselves. So, if we're not budgeting what we expect to collect, then yes. Tourism is one of those. We, it's been so up and down over the past five years that, you know, we thought COVID hit, it's way down, this is our number, and then all of a sudden it goes up, but that also affects the chamber because they try to kind of match what we're going to budget with what they're budgeting to spend, so you don't want to go crazy with that number, so you kind of want to make sure it's as conservative as you can make it, but...
And the others, this just happened?
The others are just random, basically random.
This is their year?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Commissioner Lenkowitz? All right. Any questions, comments from the public? All right. Seeing no hands raised, bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2022 amended budget, which sets December 19th as the date for public hearing on the 2022 amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2022 amended budget.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2022 amended budget, which sets December 19th as the date for public hearing on the 2022 amended budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2022 amended budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz agrees, that's unanimous, 5-0. We will move to other business. Thank you, Ms. Pack. Any other business? All right, move to Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address the commission. Ask that you try to respect the three-minute clock here.
So, I know it's a contentious deal with your towing contracts right now, but it says on the contract, I'm going to read it from what your contract says, "Neither contractor nor its employee shall take photographs at the scene of any accident in which contractors dispatched on here, except for the purposes of documenting damages. In no event shall contractor publish, post such photographs in any publication, electronic media, or social media networks." Your towing contractor that was on last week was Davis Automotive. Here's one that he posted, which was four people were transferred, and Sean's got all that, the digital pictures, hilling them, yeah. They were transferred to Salina Regional Health Center, some were code red. And another one was a picture of the high-speed pursuit that the sheriff's office, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, Kansas Highway Patrol, and the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office was involved in. Davis Automotive responded because PD dispatch dispatches for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, and then he says, and I did put the quote in here, but he pretty much admits that...
He, he being who?
The operator of the towing company, tow truck for Davis Automotive, admits that it is this, the high-speed chase vehicle, the driver ran from him, from what I can gather. They put a police impound hold on it. He posted that, yes, it is a hold, and Sean's got that information also, what the post, what he posted about that. But it says in the contract, you're not allowed to post images or pictures. How would you, as a commission, like to see your family's vehicle before either the sheriff's office, police department, or Kansas Highway Patrol can notify you of a fatality accident, which this was not a fatality, but I've been in the towing, in and out of the towing industry since I was in high school. This is a pretty bad accident. How would you guys like it if you found out from a social media platform that your family was involved in an accident?
Well, it's not our job to run this the way we would for our families, but it's to uphold the law.
Yes, in that contract.
So...
It's a breach of contract. I'm asking you suspend Davis Automotive from your towing rotation pending an outcome and an investigation, and you have the city manager's office lead the investigation due to Salina Police Department's inaction on other towing-related incidences that have breached towing contracts. Or we can, or the International Towing Association can bring in attorneys, and we can go that route if we have to. Towing companies in this town are done playing with the inactions of the Salina Police Department, and this is getting ridiculous. You do it with KHP, they'll kick you off rotation, and then they'll investigate it, and then they might bring you back on, or they might continue to leave you off rotation.
We do have the luxury of having a city manager, who I'm sure if he wasn't aware, is now.
Yeah, I acknowledge that that is a provision, that posting pictures is not acceptable, and we'll have to...
Can I say one other thing? So, I just looked, it was, I just actually looked on Facebook. It has now that picture, and some of them are seen, I don't know, some of these pictures, supposedly the sheriff's office has released, but I don't think they have. Salina 311 has them on their page before, it's all over social media, and Salina, and the individual that posted these pictures posted it to a Salina Police Scanner page that's ran by 311. 311 has in their, in that page that any pictures you post can be used for their, for their purposes.
That, that's a little more social media than I personally get involved with, but again, I'm going to defer for the city, to the city manager to investigate.
Can we have an update on this Monday? Or can you put it out to the towing companies at least?
As we see appropriate.
Anyone else?
If you want to do something for the public, let's address these plastic sacks. Two, can you do anything about these random phone calls we're getting? That call I just answered, I didn't know, I was an insurance agent. Your bike trails that you're discussing about, if they're going to be dirt, then you're going to have an environmental issue. We are working on closing all dirt bike trails at the state lakes. We're in the process of getting it done. So, you might want to make sure if you're going to build these trails, you're going to have to be an all-weather service, otherwise you got an environmental issue. We're using all this reused concrete around the city. That stuff is hazardous, it's calcium chloride, it'll burn you. You're trying to clean up the water issue out here at the old base, yet you're using this concrete for refill, so you're just putting chemicals back in the water. You need to stop that if you can. And you're getting these surveillance cameras for detecting people are driving up down the street that you might need to know who they are. Well, if you're going to buy those, we're going to have to have some radars for these incoming drones, because they're going to put, they're going to put weapons on these drones, they're already doing it here in the states. These drones can come in under 300 feet. I don't think the radar out at the airport at 300 feet below, their radar doesn't pick up these drones or any other aircraft. So, you might want to put that on your list, which list, get some radar around this airport, make it a no-fly zone.
Just to clear, one of those issues, does our park master plan in the river, we don't have any provisions for allowing dirt, I mean, the motorized, called dirt bikes on the trails, and motorized bikes?
In the park...
In our park.
Well, any regulation we would have would just be kind of the standard regulation. We can take a look at that. I understood his comments to be doing away with dirt trails, which we, we'll look at it from an erosion standpoint, if the terrain is such that it's problematic, but we haven't seen that be the case at the top of the level year where we have trails located.
Well, it's even non-motorized bikes we're getting rid of. I go to all these Department of Parks meetings, I'm going to one next January.
Your statement was you're getting rid of dirt trails. You mean you're getting rid of dirt bikes on trails?
Anything that is going to make an erosion problem.
Dirt, the vehicle or the trail?
Both. We're going to close them. It's in the works. We're in the process of getting these trails closed at the lakes.
Okay, that's what I understood you to say.
I mean, agricultural people, we're doing no-tail farming, and then you're around here tearing up the terrain, causing problems. We're working on trying to save the soil, and yet you want to destroy it, the environment. You're going to clean out this old river channel? Why are you going to do it? If you're going to have erosion, it's going to fill it up again.
All right, that was what I understood your comment to be. Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, 5 to 0. Thank you.